To order the June, sorry, July 8th, 2019 meeting of the council, the town of Washington. There are several things that I'd like to add to the agenda. C under Old Business is a brief discussion on the town clerk search. Ms. Kim, I'd like you to go ahead and leave that to me at that point. And then under New Business, the boundary line adjustment resolution, I'd like to bring up for discussion and thoughts from council members. Are there any other items that would like to be added?
Do you want to add the street light update?
Street light update, the devander, Old Business, and then it'd be D under Old Business. Anything else, Mr. Bennett, anything from you? It sounds weird. All right.
The town permit. You want to discuss?
Yeah, yeah, I thought that was on here.
That was on your table.
It was carried over.
We didn't advertise it because the paper wouldn't publish it, so it's not on here. So you need to add that.
All right, we'll go ahead and put that as E under Old Business.
Okay.
Permit fee.
The permit fee structure, upper limits.
Yes.
Permit fee structure. All right, we've got the E, do I hear an F? All right, I would like to go ahead and move for the amended agenda to be approved.
Second.
Second, from Gail. Those in favor, oh, we have to do a roll call. Mr. Scheiner?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right. Are there any additions or revisions or corrections?
I think it looked really good. I just, I definitely needed to say under that minutes where it said the motion passed by these were in this legate being absent or not, because we had it under number one. I didn't know if it was necessary. And the other thing, it's a little thing, but I just thought we ought to put Mr. Ockley's first name maybe in the paragraph under the planning commission.
I was wondering if we should put his name as well.
And then on page three, there's just at the top of it, there seem to be at the last, that paragraph up top, the last few words, it says "are really are," and I wasn't even sure what that whole sentence meant. Was it like, that was a direct quote? It was a direct quote?
Maybe take, take one of the "are" out, "was a job to really are."
And then put quotation marks.
Well, I didn't, I just changed it to that in the past opinion. I'll just take out the "are," "jobs really are."
No, because Mr. Rachel is a period on the QuickBooks.
I'm intimidated by it really, but we can only do our best here.
All right. Any other changes? May I have a motion to approve Minutes?
I'm in motion.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Minutes are so approved. I'd like to start off with three brief things. The first is the post office, no, not yet. We're trying really hard to get that final thing, but all indications are good. So we will keep holding our breath, hopefully not very much wrong. The second is, I want to commend Ms. Dodd for getting the Minutes to us within the timeframe of the next meeting. I greatly appreciate it. I know she had to do a lot of work to bring those up, and I just want to thank you for that. And to Mary Ann for going through them ahead of time and helping out and just everything so that we have these at the next town council meeting. It's wonderful. So thank you for that. Third, I want to thank the people who made Saturday night's concert a wonderful success. I'd like to thank the Regneris, I'd like to thank the Waltons, Gail Swift, and Caroline Ance for all the work that you all did. It was, I got there early on and it was hot as a dickens, and I thought we were going to lose about four or five board band members. But fortunately, a line of storms came through, and I don't know who killed the sacrificial lamb, but it worked. The storms all went north of us, but it did cool things down and conserve it. So a big thank you goes out to all of you for all that you did. It was really wonderful.
And I think it should be noted that Beverly and John were still today moving music stands single-handedly back to castles.
Wow.
Everybody pitching in.
And I would be remiss if I did not give you a special thank you to make sure that the Colonel was able to be vertical for the entire concert. All right, Treasury report.
Thank you. Looking at the report, we will see under Water Works, two things. One, gallons pumped is huge. We've had, we had three water main breaks. So you see some TBDs here. ESS got the report to us at the very end of the afternoon today, and there was no time to input all of the numbers in. So I will get this done with Laura in the next few days, and I'll send you out a completed one with the corrected gallons on.
Changes to the A, consolidated assets.
We're doing.
Six twenty-eight, nineteen-nineteen. New one.
Oh, I got two nineties down. And I believe, as I mentioned earlier, sometime in the next few weeks, I'll be sitting down and getting the budget input into QuickBooks so that we can start seeing some comparisons. My goal is to have a good year-to-date comparison for everybody, so. That's E, and let's see. Goals to be paid. I don't think there's anything outstanding there except for the water main breaks. Anything else, Laura?
Well, I think everyone should know that VML is now.
Virginia Risk.
Solution.
Yes.
So it's changed its name so that V R S A is what it is now.
Virginia municipally. What?
Virginia Risk. I want to say Risk Management, but it's not, hold on.
You're talking about the insurance program? All right, so it's not VML, it's changed, VML Insurance has now changed to this new name.
Yes, yes, like the insurance, it's not, it's like Risk, yeah. More stable than we are. Because you want to have everything.
All right. Anything else?
No, we've had quite a few breaks with that.
Any questions or comments? May I have a motion for approval of the Treasury report?
Absolutely.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you, Catherine. Roll call vote, Brennan?
Yes.
All right. Yes?
Yes.
All right. Planning Commission.
Madam Chair. We have nothing to report except that our last meeting, we did make a recommendation to you, Mr. Mann, to approve the easement of the forty-one acres for parcels at Mount Prospect. And I think you now, Laura can correct me if I'm wrong, the letter has to go to the...
Mary Ann.
The person that, yeah, the manager.
The ball is in my court.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for taking that action.
Will you be meeting in July?
I think so. Yes.
So the Planning Commission has made a recommendation to the town council for that, do we need to do a vote for the town council? We do it.
This is to say that putting an end to the easement is not against, is not comprehensive.
Yeah, they want to assure us that this was in a line with the comprehensive plan, which it is.
It protects the U. Shed and protects the very, very special famous farms in County County. I don't know if you guys saw the stats, they put forty percent of the dollars.
Can this be a voice vote, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, it's, it's a sort of informal.
You're just giving me the authority to write the letter.
Same, same, my council supports it.
Is there any discussion? Any questions?
Just familiarizing me with this.
So a town resident.
Actually, would you like to speak on? Yes. The owners of Mount Prospect want to put forty-one acres into easement. It's four parcels, and most of it is in the town, some of it is in the county. And they applied to the land use administrator, who, there was a debatable point about whether actually did need to come to the planning commission, but the land use administrator was, wanted to dot his i's and cross his t's. So his question was, is this inconformative with the complex plan as laid out for the future of Little Washington? And it is, and we unanimously felt that it should be, it should be approved by Fred and Tru, when this last happened in 2012, the then mayor wrote a letter to the equivalent land use administrator saying that it was approved.
Okay. Any other questions? May I have a voice vote of those in favor of supporting this letter to be written by me to the land use commissioner, or whatever the name of the person is?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, for me.
What was that, a motion?
It was a voice vote, it was a motion. It's actually like consensus, but it's my consensus.
It wasn't a person's.
No.
I was.
Thank you. All right. Architectural Review Board. Any things on the Architectural Review Board? We are still seeking nominations for the position between now and August 5th for a position on the Planning Commission and a position on the Architectural Review Board. Both positions must be filled by someone who is a resident of the town.
They are not, they are not meeting next week.
On Wednesday.
But they may, they are planning to meet on the seventeenth. I think to consider the post office.
Okay.
But that hasn't been formalized, but they are.
But they are not meeting on Wednesday.
They're naming on the seventeenth.
So the meeting of Architectural Review Board, which is slated for Wednesday, has been canceled, and it may occur later, and there may be a notice, I presume, at an appropriate time, and a paper, and so on and so forth. Good. Mr. Bennett?
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Let's get on. Post Office, project update. Possible adoption of the resolution confirming the town's responsibility for matter of delay in maintenance and removal of the remains of the structure on property to be sold by the town for a new postal facility. Mr. Bennett, do you want to put that into plain English?
Well, it may, there's a lot of things that have happened that essentially resulted in nothing happening. But I think there's a number of items in play and things to consider, and it may be best to take this matter up after a closed session to discuss some legal matters that have developed just very recently.
Okay.
So we'll move this down to when we go back into open session then?
All right. We'll move Old Business A down to open session or B, whatever. All right. Is B under Old Business also to be moved down?
Yes.
Okay. So A and B would both be moved down till after the, as far as the open session. C, discussion of the town clerk search.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Well, nobody ever put a place on during the war. I, I put an ad on Indeed.com, which is a website for employers and employees, and that was on June 23rd, and within, I'd say within 24 hours, we received a great number of applications. To this day, we've received 61 applications. Gail and I have gone through, reviewed all of them, and by the way, we also posted an ad in the rapid news, but to my knowledge, I don't think anything's come from that, from that route.
From the email that you created or the fax machine, so.
Okay, so anyway, we, 61 applications. Now, these applications included, most of them cover letters, extensive resumes, and answers to 10 questions like, what's your, how many years of experience have you had for in Excel and Microsoft QuickBooks? Would they agree to a background check? What's their availability? So we've narrowed the candidates down to three strong potential ones. Now.
We'll continue it in closed session.
Yeah, we'll continue it in closed session. We've had phone interviews with probably, I've done maybe six of them, and of those six, we brought in so far, four people, and we're down to two that we have that are very strong, and one tomorrow's coming that seems very, very strong. So we'll be talking more about this in closed session. In the meantime, we encourage everyone who's interested to apply, and we have, they have until July 22nd, 5:00 p.m. The final selection is after we narrow it down to two or three, then Gail and Fred are going to interview them, and then it will be presented to council at the August 12th meeting, the prime candidate. And then we'll talk more in closed session about the candidates.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Gail, thank you, Mary Ann, for all the work that you've done on this. It's wonderful. Street light update.
May I do that?
You may do that.
So we got two new light bulbs, different light bulbs, that have refilled some, and one is right at Porter and Mount Salem, where I call them magistrate's building, but I don't think it is anymore, it's that white garage. And then at the next street light up on Mount Salem is the other one.
Where the turn at.
So now we have, people have to say, okay, of the ones that have started at Porter and Main, coming up around the curve, which is your favorite? And I think the two new ones are probably going to come in on that. But you have to wait until after dark to look at them, so.
I keep on forgetting.
Well, who knows, you probably didn't only wait home tonight. I really don't think we're, we bit.
All right. Thank you very much.
But we should encourage your neighbors to look too.
Do we need to get some kind of publicity to ensure, can we put something in the next order bill?
Yes, because they, they are in office.
Let's put something in the next order bill.
And I'll put something on the kiosk to read letters.
Yeah, and actually, it would be really, I think, to everybody's benefit, I know it's, it may seem tanky, but it would only be for the next month or something, is maybe use something as simple as put A, B, C, D in the order.
Just thinking numbers and whatever.
Or put a ribbon or something around.
Some of them have, I'll put ribbons and numbers on them, it's not matter. I just haven't, I can do it tomorrow.
All right, thank you. All right. Mr. Bennett, we'll come back to you for the permit fee structure.
Make the changes as we discussed at the last council meeting. Here it is, the council's further review and comment.
And we determined, and I can't remember, I'm sorry, maybe in the minutes, but the difference between minor and major, is that kind of the interpretation of the zoning
It could be in consultation with the chairman of the ARB, if we're reading that a little bit, but as we discussed last time, I think we really, you see, you see the same and you know which one is the right.
All right.
Didn't you bring up one time as you might be considering the permit? Is that, yes, is that something that would go under?
Yeah, we have not, yes, we should probably discuss that at some time, but we have not done it now. But, yeah, we should add that on, as something to consider.
Special permit.
So, okay.
It could be sort of catch-all, any temporary permit or permit not specified above, have some catch-all for you.
Well, it's, I think it's an important enough thing, and I'm sensitive to the length of this, the potential length of this meeting anyway. I'd rather, let's put it on the agenda for next month, the upfalls. Do we need to have a roll call vote for this?
At this one, just carry it on the empty.
Oh. No, I would say, let's just go ahead and do this, and then we can do the next one, just add it on.
Oh, there's been, there's been a motion to advertise, for public hearing on these fee cards.
I'd make a motion that we advertise for a public hearing at the August 12th town council meeting to review the fee schedule, to consider adoption of the option.
The fee schedule.
With the fee schedule, we're considering that, in September, just to account for people who are not here. No, we have a lot of vacation people.
My sense is, I'd rather go ahead and address it sooner than later, because we may have other things that come up in September.
Yeah, we're going to, yes.
All right. Do I have a second? That held a moment. All right, thank you. All those in favor, did they take roll call? Fred, yes. Mary Ann, yes. Fred, yes?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And the next item. New business. There's consideration and possible approval of proposals to paint the waste water treatment plan building.
That's us, whatever, anyway, anybody who hasn't been in the waste water treatment plan needs to go look at that building. It's, it's in really sad shape, bad boards, that really needs a lot of work, not just a couple coats of stain. Hector, he did the move here, and he came through with an incredible, incredible price to do that whole building.
He spent a lot of work around town now, three kids of ours. He did a really nice job on the building, and that's fine, that looks good.
And it's, it's more than painting. It's staining, and it's bulking, repairing boards, lots of different things.
I have a problem going ahead and painting a building with lap siding. You're just throwing my stain. Why that building was built with board and mat in one portion and lap siding around the rest of it, I don't know why they did that. The lap siding is curled, so bugs and water is going to get up underneath there. I think before we paint, we need to get a quote to have that lap siding removed, and then follow the board and mat, the vertical style, and then, then we can say what we're going to do next. You know, I went down there the other day, and I saw that this was coming up, and there was a photograph of some of the boards and things, and again, I think it's just, you're kind of, on that portion of the building, you just tell them, fix the boards, repair the, replace the siding on that section of it, then go.
How big a section is it?
It's, it's half of it. Yeah, it's, well, I'd say it's probably about a third, because on one end, it's vertical, and then there's a small section of lap siding, and then you go down the long side where the door is, and that's all lap siding. But it's all curled, and you've got gaps that are an inch, and part of the reason is, that siding was not nailed on, it was stapled on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Really?
Yes, it was not nailed on.
So is that a reason for other issues with the building? Is it happening, you said?
It's curled.
Curled.
Because that, when you do that kind of siding, you have to paint the backside of it, as well as the front side. It was not done. Corners were cut. Any of the woodwork down there, the fencing around the plank itself, I suspected the whole thing, and when you start going from the gate going down the first side of it, there may have been two, 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 you get down the far end, no one's looking, one did, one did, one did. So, you know, we didn't, we never had a owner's engineer keeping track of what was going on and overseeing this stuff. We just kind of proved, and then true. But, but that building, you could say, was not, you know, and like I say, why they went to two, I mean, if you're going to do it, just do it all the same. But, you know, the lap siding, it is curled, and if you put paint on it, what's going to happen is, the stain, the moisture is going to come through the backside, it's going to push it off, and I know this, because this is what happened on our house, on feed line. So it's kind of ridiculous to do that. It does need to be stained, I have no qualms with that, but I think before we do it, you should get a quote to have that portion of siding replaced.
Gail would?
I would.
I would.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
And another estimate?
We need to, I think we need to, well, you know, typical thing, we need a couple of bids to replace that woodwork, and then, well, you know, Hector's given us this little quote, you know, it'd be nice to know what stain you did.
He told me, I'll get it.
But we should have documentation to, is it a good call of the stain that we're not going to have in the back? Three years, do it again.
I'll put, I'll put specs on it, but let's, someone just go ahead and make a motion to table it.
You'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll set it.
All right, all those in favor, tabling this, this discussion and the possible approval of the proposal until the August meeting, please indicate by saying aye, or actually, we want to do a roll call, so Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, so approved. All right. Finally, under New Business, I passed around and I assume it was put out that I felt that we're at a point where it could make sense to.
I don't think it passed out. I know I didn't pass that. I already got it in the meeting on the day, but I didn't make copies of it. I can go make copies of it now.
That would be great.
You can keep talking.
While she's doing that, why don't we, uh, I'd rather the public be able to look at it as well, as we're discussing. So, why don't we go ahead and go to the public forum, and then we'll come back to talk about the resolution. So, open up to public. Any questions, comments, thoughts from the public?
I think the public wanted to hear an update from the post office, but I understand the public's got to wait a very long time to get to that, is that right?
I, I think to get the kind of, uh, update you want is not going to occur at this meeting. Okay. Um, the, um, we are still dealing with, um, I don't know how the best way to put it, entanglements. And it's a, it's a process of making sure that everyone feels that they have covered, um, whole bases. And so, we are running around, to make sure that people all over this mighty country are having their bases covered.
Okay. Understand the language.
Fred, if we're waiting, just another observation, I think I might have said this last time, but while I'm 100% behind the action tonight to, uh, move along, the act reads, putting 41 acres or whatever it is, not all that's in town, anything, in an easement. It does once again point out the inherent tensions within the comprehensive plan. That to the extent the town is serious about increasing residential options within the town of Washington, every time you take open undeveloped space and conserve it, no matter how worthy the cause, you constrict the realistic potential of meeting that other major comprehensive plan goal. I say that because when someone says, well, how can you do both of these within the existing limits of the town? The answer is, you might not be able to. Which is why the town has been thinking and working hard to create yet another option, which is property line adjustments, borderline adjustments. So, um, while it might be obvious to everyone, my experience here is, it's not obvious to everyone that if we want a county and a town that are absolutely spectacular, where view sheds are preserved, where historic properties are not cheap by jowl, but new construction, all the things we all want. But we also want the town not to become a ghost town, or simply a place where people come to visit and then leave. The town and people around the town are going to have to be realistic and realize other creative thinking outside of the box, doing these differently solutions are the only way to get there. And so, as we, as the town moves forward, and the county moves forward the next several years, I hope that people will realize that as we support the preservation of what makes this county unique, the tensions that build around how do we keep people living here have got to be addressed in new and more, I think, creative ways. So, just an observation, tonight's a great night for continuing to preserve and advance the beauty of this place. Once, once it's gone, you can't ever get it back. But if we're serious about increasing housing options and bringing more people to live in the town, then people have to be more open, maybe, and more supportive. Is that what this is?
That's what this is.
Alright.
Good segue.
As usual.
Clairvoyance not being a gift, that was just luck.
Very profound, and, uh, appreciate your comments. And I think that you bring up a very good point about, and there is a tension between conservation and the desire to, um, thoughtfully and, and, uh, well-planned manner increase the population of the town so that the community can enjoy the benefits of that, um, that population, including the vibrancy and vitality of the town. So I thank you as always for those comments. As part of the process, I felt it would be good for us to, we have, uh, former mayor, I think it was about a year ago, John, that you made some comments during, I think, one of your, of our meetings, opening comments, to where you said the town is open to boundary line adjustment applications. I wanted to take that a step further and, and basically say, uh, propose that we have a resolution from the town that calls in mind some of the things that we feel are important and part of the reasons why we would be welcome to having a boundary line adjustment. And I think what, um, Mr. H. has just said, and what I think the comprehensive plan calls for, is that it is a thoughtful, well-planned increase. This is not rushing and bringing in, uh, a huge, massive people that changes the character of the community. But it has been noted that most towns, when they are going through revitalization or growth, they do it through development of infill. And the town of Washington, outside of the extremities such as the Prospect Hill property, doesn't have a lot of infill lots within the central part of the town. And, um, there is a hope that we can, um, compensate for the decline in the population density in the town that has occurred over the last 50 or so years, where the population was more than seven people per house, and it's down to less than two people per house. That essentially means that we no longer have families here, uh, with a large number of kids, we're a different kind of town. And we need to think creatively and thoughtfully about how we want to go forward. And, uh, part of this is to make it very clear that we are supportive of applicants who want to come in, that, um, we are working with the county and with the district court, since that is part of the process for a boundary line adjustment. And that this process is meant to enhance all those things which are good about the town, and allows to continue to thrive as this wonderful, unique town. At that point, I will start pontificating. Can see a very question to this man.
Thank you, Fred. I appreciate that introduction, and also Gary's points. I have, I have a couple of points. Not so long ago, we had a lot of discussion at the planning commission here about the PUD. And in the end, we resolved it with a very good memo, which came from our distinguished lawyer, explaining the whole process that we'd be engaged in if there was a PUD. And one of those was, who would the applications go to? And there were roles for the ARB, there were roles for the planning commission, finally a role for the town council. We also said very definitively in that, um, memo, that we all approved, that any PUD would be synonymous with the current town footprint, the current town footprint. So not applicable in the case of boundary adjustments, or we'd have to redo the whole thing to take that into account. And also, um, synonymous with the sewer footprint. And we had a long discussion about that, about what would happen if there were boundary adjustments. And we all said, no, this PUD is not, has no applicability. So I, um, I guess my question is, with this process, if people put in applications, I would like to know with as, with as much specificity as possible from our lawyer, what the process would be, again, for approval? And then just a point of order, if I may? I do think this is an important piece of paper. And I think that, just seeing it now, um, you know, as the meeting is ongoing, with no real time to reflect on that, I think it requires some serious thought. And so I would hope that this is not going to be, um, a resolution which the town council is gonna vote on today.
No, I, I really brought it up for discussion today, uh, and to have it be brought up for vote at the earliest at the, at the August meeting. But I'm wanting to get it out there and allow people to see it, and have a discussion such as this about this. Absolutely. I think there is a question to you.
I'd, uh, one matter, it's clear from the agenda that this was to be considered in August, but I would give adequate time for a referral to the planning commission. While it's not a formal action, land use action that requires a referral, it certainly a land use matter, which the input, comments, recommendations of the planning commission, after considering it, to be back to council by the August meeting, would be most helpful. So that would be my first question, the council would wish or wants to consider a referral to the planning commission under these circumstances. The, to address, um, your point, I think it's the vision of the comprehensive plan. It was really the vision of, behind the PUD, that it would allow creative approaches to development, and would avoid the cookie cutter approach that you see in so many places, including otherwise historic towns. Personally, you know, a lot of, you drive through a lot of different places, and the way they were developed sort of snuck up on me. And the vision is that sewer ordinance and the comprehensive plan, I think, is to wish to encourage infill development, and the town grows sort of organically from that, and not have pockets of development spread there, there, there. One big reason being, we wish development to be on town sewer. And every time you run a sewer line through somebody else's property, then that gives them all the rights to the sewer that the ordinance otherwise permits by right. So, that's a really compelling reason that the town should grow organically from its core outwards over time, over time. Now, as far as the process for a boundary line adjustment, it's a consensual process, there has to be agreement between the town and the county. Actually, that agreement of the, um, owner of the land is not required, but that is a requirement under this memo, or this resolution. And typically, legally, a piece of property comes into the town at the lowest density zoning classification. But that doesn't, it doesn't happen that way. That when there are boundary line agreements, there is a negotiated agreement as to the zoning, what services will be provided to the parcel, and essentially, a conceptual development plan offered as to how the parcel will develop. So, you really have most everything on the town, on the table for the town to consider when it looks at an application for a boundary line adjustment. It's not just, let's bring in four acres over there and see what happens. It's four acres here of what's proposed to happen, which would be in the form of an agreement that's approved by, in this case, the circuit court, it's district court in federal system, with circuit court here, and becomes legally enforceable as part of the agreement. If you want to go online and look at the one from Culpmark, you can see it.
So, so just, so I understand, you're saying that the boundary, a boundary line adjustment doesn't just happen, and then nothing is put in that spot? When it's made, it's made in full knowledge of what's gonna be built within that land that is now coming into the town?
It's typical, it's not required by law, that's what practice is, that jurisdictions, when you take any piece of property, you're under obligations to provide services. Now, the town doesn't have a lot of different services, but that could become a problem in the future. So typically, jurisdiction doesn't take in something that could become an obligation unless it knows what it's given. So you have these boundary line agreements, which are carefully negotiated, and then put in a very tight legal language, that's reviewed by the court and approved.
I don't know about the protocol, since we didn't close the public session, so I assume this is still a public session. Well, since you did such a beautiful job of segueing in.
I, I would endorse the suggestion that it be referred to the planning commission, and that this be held over. That gives them a chance to consider, they have a meeting coming up before your next town council meeting. It would also give the town council an opportunity, if you so chose, to, uh, send an email or, or otherwise communicate to both the planning commission and the town council exactly his understanding of what the memorandum concerning the PUD was. I remember it slightly differently, Lee, than Ms. Anstine, not vastly differently. I think, my understanding was that, as approved, the PUD applies now only to the existing town boundaries, and there was a provision about compatibility with the existing rules and regulations about the sewer districts. I think that's correct, but my memory could be faulty.
That's correct.
If there's going to be a boundary line adjustment, then the applicability of the PUD ordinance has to come up again. It's not automatic, it does not currently apply. But that does not in any way foreclose the council's capacity and its legislative function to extend the PUD in its current form to any additional area that would come in through a boundary line adjustment. So it isn't that it can't apply, it's that it won't apply unless there's additional action on the part of the council. That's my understanding.
I think that's right, but do we need a public hearing, and to pursue back to the planning commission? We best have discussed it.
Right. Well, on, on any extension.
Yeah.
Right. But if the town council so chose to put that in a brief statement, then that would also help when you get to your public hearing. You would have tonight's rollout, you would have a planning commission review and recommendation, or whatever, back to you, so that when you come back to this a month from now, you would have a number of these in place, and then you could build on that if you so chose. Also, there's, this is not fair, because I don't know where this, but, uh, the last, the town resolves, to be welcoming to applications probably should either be to be welcoming to, or simply to welcome applications.
Take out the word "be" and the second "to."
That's one way. That has a slightly different meaning than to be welcoming to, slightly different. So I don't know what, what the intent of the writer was, but you might ask Ms. Keaton to edit that.
The intent of the writer, the justice center's driving 12 hours.
I don't want to hear any whine when I'm part of a county council.
I think the planning commission did.
You have ample, ample, uh, skill.
Wordsmiths.
Skill, sitting right next to you to text that, but I wouldn't want that published in its current form, it looks a little...
I'm, I'm starting to hear rumbles that we should close the public.
Are you going to formally close it?
I am, I'm gonna do it.
Now are you gonna go back and refer to the planning commission?
I think we should, and I think that would be, uh, a vote, just consensual.
That is, that would be a motion, no call vote.
So I make a, uh, I actually make a motion that is two parts. The first part is to recommend, uh, that the attorney take this document, look at it, hearing the thoughts and concerns that came up tonight, um, and, uh, come up with the appropriate language, and, um, and then to, the second part of the motion is then to have that document referred to the planning commission for their review.
I've heard all the discussion, and I've heard the specific suggestion there, but apart from the specific suggestion, how, as to the rest of the discussion, how much of it?
I think Ms. Anstine's, uh, original concern, which is... I think Ms. Anstey's original concern, which is that the protections that were put in the PUD, how do we ensure that those protections are guaranteed and properly brought in through the boundary line, boundary line adjustment? And I think what I heard Mr. H. will say is that it is possible that that could happen, but there needs to be, the town council needs to be proactively doing that. And I don't want to have a situation 10 years down the road, or 15 years down the road, or what have you, where the town council doesn't realize that it needs to take that step. And I want to make sure that that step is taken to protect the such concerns as the ones that Ms. Anstey brought up. So the first part of the motion is to go to...
I can do that next day or two and get it out to everybody.
And then the second part is then to refer that to the planning commission for them to review at their July meeting, so that it comes back to us in August. My guess is that we would review it in August, but we would not vote on it until September? Or would we be able to vote on it in August?
We could vote on it in August, it's a resolution. It's not an ordinance that legally bind it on this council or in the future of council, it's just an expression, just an expression by this council.
All right.
Mr. May, could town council members also get a copy of what John's going to...
Oh, yes, I'll have it there to send it to everybody.
I may have a second on that motion. Are there any further discussion or addition to deletions of that motion? So you have a fur, Brad. All those in favor of a motion roll call vote. Brad?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, thank you for the comments, and we head on then. And... All right. At this point, council is going to close session. Mr. Bennett, do I read this, or do you read this?
I can go out.
All right. This is the motion?
The formal motion would be that the council enter in closed session in accordance with provisions of section 2.237, 11A3, discuss the disposition publicly held property named parcel three at the intersection of Old Route 211 and Leggett Lane, where discussion in open session would adversely affect bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the town council, and further adds to this matter to invite John Sullivan to attend such closed session to provide additional information to council. And secondly, for council to enter in closed section in accordance with provisions of 2.237, 11A1, to assess and consider prospective named candidates for employment with the town as sound fit.
All right.
Wasn't there going to be something about demolishing the building?
That is...
I agree.
Yeah, maybe that's going to come in at...
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, all right.
All right. Would someone like to make that motion?
Yes.
I'm so moved.
Gail's making a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All right. Roll call vote, Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. All right. We are in two closed sessions, thank you very much.
Do we should be certified that only those matters that are lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements, under the Freedom of Information Act, and only those matters which were identified in the motion on which the foregoing closed session was convened or heard or discussed or considered in the closed session, I'll say it should be.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Council is now in open session.
All right. I would like to make a motion based on the April 24, 2019 letter from Dan J. Hoteck, structural engineer, who said, "Being inside the structure on the porch is currently unsafe to the level of decay of the floor systems" and recommends, "It is my professional opinion that since it is not feasible to repair the existing building and in its current state is the liability due to the unsafe conditions present, it is in the best interest of the public that the building be demolished before it becomes further decayed and more of a safety hazard to anyone who should choose to enter it." As well as the July 3, 2019 letter from Tumuchin Ullbi, that says, "Therefore, I am of the opinion that the highest and best use of the subject property would be to raise the existing structure in order to provide a vacant site, that the building is a public hazard because of its structural demise, that it is an imminent danger to collapse and cause severe bodily harm, that its long-term unoccupied status makes it likely that it contains varmints and other public health threats to the community. I move that the mayor be authorized to expend up to $8,000 for the demolition and removal of the publicly held property, namely parcel three at the intersection of Old Route 211 and Leggett Lane."
Can you say vermin instead of varmints?
Vermin, thank you. Not varmints, vermin. I accept that. So do I.
Get up at four or five in the morning.
Yeah, I know you are. So, do I have a second, then we can have a discussion?
I'll say it.
All right, we have a second. Joe, any discussion, any other mentions of changes?
I've been in that building recently, and it's treacherous.
And I'll point out that there's a legal doctrine of tract of nuisance, that if a child or something went in there, the town could be strictly liable for any injuries or whatever to a child.
A child.
Team injuries.
Teens, uh, now, like, to find them in a private spot, anything can happen.
Natural, not best, um, chickens.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call vote, in favor of the motion, Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, so moved.
So resolved.
So resolved. Thank you. We now have two other items, a post office project update and possible adoption of a resolution confirming the town's responsibility for matters of maintenance and middle remains, we've already talked about that. Second was consideration of possible removal of exposure, we talked about that. So I think we've resolved both the things that we were going to carry over after the closed session. The final thing that we have in an open session is consideration of a resolution or advertisement of an ordinance for the sale of parcel three at the intersection of Old...
Okay, sorry.
...211 and Leggett Lane, this property that we have just passed the motion on, for the sum of $1 to induce location of a new postal facility within the town. And so what we're doing is we're approving to have advertisement, two public notices, one hopefully to be in this Thursday's edition of the Rappahannock News, and the second to be in the following Thursdays, which will be the 20th, with the hope that the town council will be having a special meeting at the end of the month of July to address this ordinance or to approve, to review and approve.
Or a public hearing.
Or a public hearing, thank you.
Is it on July 18th?
July 18th.
Now, today's date is November 11th.
And then 18th, right, and you said 21st.
Then I understand. Yeah, so this was, I did not make that as a motion, I just, okay.
If it goes in this week, the council meeting would be on the 25th of July, and if it doesn't go in, then the council meeting would be on August 1st at 7:00 p.m.
Before we have a motion to, to pass such a resolution for advertisement, are there any questions? Or should I make the motion first?
Well, I'm just wondering something. When we advertise this for a dollar, is there a possibility of a...
Purchase.
Yeah. I want to be very careful in how I say this, someone who purchased the property in order to block the postal service.
Who would present a contract.
It's to amend the existing contract sale price to a dollar. That's the specific...
Okay, so a full contract.
And something else that I'm trying to bring up at the next meeting is, should the deed contain what's called a reverter clause, in the fact that it's not used for United States Postal Service purposes, that it couldn't be resold to a third party, you have to come back to the town, so it's going to dominate for that.
Okay, so the resolution is essentially just amending the contract, which we've already seen, to purchase the property down in value of $1.
Or a public hearing to authorize.
Authorize that, so that, again, so there's not someone else who is going to come in there.
Why do we have to have a public hearing to authorize that?
Because we're changing the...
Sale price. You have to have a public hearing to sell real property that belongs to the government. And here you're having a significant change to one of the terms, so that has to be advertised and considered by council.
As noticed.
Well, no, I mean, it's a public hearing, council considers it, and if they wish to do that, it would be in front of the vote to do it, and if they don't, it wouldn't be done.
All right. So what we really need tonight is just a resolution, a motion.
Authorize.
Motion authorize.
The advertisement Thursday, the following Thursday, can't get it then then...
Or the immediate follow-up, you got Thursday, is that? I say it.
I say it.
Any other discussion? All right. Roll call vote, Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, come on, add a balloon and more droplets. All right. Is there anything else to come before us this evening? Speak at your risk of bodily harm, I'm saying. All right. Here, if no such thing, I make a motion that we close the meeting of July...
Yeah, we did.
That was the one, more.
That was the first one. Yeah, we authorized him to spend up to $8,000.
For the demolition of the old property.
Yeah, that's what we made, that was the first move that we voted on, right? Yeah, we voted on that and we voted on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have a sequel to the question, that this meeting be continued to the 28th, pending advertising, if not, it be continued to, first of all.
Then, of this meeting, in light of the good counsel from the town, counselor is that this meeting should be continued, and so we'll have a motion to continue this meeting. Mr. Bennett?
To the 28th.
It's 25th is what you said.
Oh, 25th, it's...
25th or the 1st.
25th, July, at 7:00 p.m., pending proper advertising. If it's going later, it would be continued to August 1st, 1st at 7:00 p.m.
I don't think we voted on the allotment of the line. I don't either. I didn't, I didn't vote for it. I didn't think so either.
I don't know if you were taking this.
We...
Did you write it?
We, oh, yes. They authorized to spend up to $8,000 for the demolition of the old property.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We all obviously, we all, so. Anyway, all right, we continue the current meeting until the 25th or August 1st, pending on the advertising placed in Rappahannock News.
And I second it.
All those in favor, roll call.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's get out of here. Thank you, thank you for your patience.